All right, I'm gonna call the December 11th, 2018 meeting in the Macon County Board of Commissioners to order. I'd like to welcome all of you in attendance. It was a pretty beautiful, magnificent trip coming down from Highlands, watching the weather change from about a foot, over a foot of snow when I left the city limits to virtually nothing by the time you get to the city limits of Franklin. So, to see that progression and just kinda shows the topographic and diversity of the county that we live in and all call home. And so definitely a pretty special place. Do we have any announcements? Anybody? All right, let's all rise and observe a moment of silence and I'll ask Commissioner Shills to lead us in the budget.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do not have a public hearing tonight, so we're gonna be brought on into our public comment period. Norrell Kirkland, preserve our ambiance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just briefly, I'm going to show this to the audience before I address you all. Now, you might think I am here tonight to talk about how I helped form the Wesley Playground when it was originally built, maintain the Greenway, work on maintaining part of the Appalachian Trail before I got injured, even the Peaks Creek video, just to give Mr. Gillespie a background on me. But you all know me well enough to know that I just love Macon County and intend on dying here. It's just the place to live. So, tonight I'm going to focus on what good you guys have done. If you go to the end of East Main Street, there is almost a whole community below the Integra Bank headquarters with doctors' offices, and I even went to the health place to try and rehabilitate after my operation four years ago. And now we have an old folks home. You go to the swimming pool area and that formerly empty area is now the wonderful Smoky Mountain Performing Arts Center with a restaurant. Do any of you recognize Mr. Grady? This is the sawmill before you redid Siler Road. And now, look at what that encompasses with Walmart, new homes for a whole bunch of people. And even if people were upset initially about things changing, look at the good that it's brought. Does anybody here remember this area? This is where you used to go to drive-in theaters, Frog Town, and now Phil Drake has three, building a fourth structure. So, think of all the employment and the education that you've brought to our town. I am so grateful for what you commissioners and your predecessors have done. Grateful until this August. That's when Duke Energy started putting in great big tall towers to replace the wooden telephone pole, saying that the capacity had been exceeded and this was the way to go. They were very smart. They did it along road sides that you don't think of except as corridors to and from town. But all of a sudden, two weeks ago, when the traffic was stopped and you started cutting oak trees and hickories and maples right here through prime thoroughfare of town, gentlemen, your great-grandfathers rode past those trees magnificent even then when they would come to town to give their produce. I am very distressed that you have allowed this to hurt the image of Franklin because people do come here as tourists for the image. You could've gone to Duke and said, "For heaven's sakes, why don't you take the millions of dollars you're spending on all these towers and put up a windmill behind Walmart on that hill?" Or even go to Jim Vanderwood's land that abuts the Greenway that he wants to sell. It's south-facing, you could've put solar panels there. So, I'm very distressed to lose these trees. And before I turn my back as a public protest to you, I want to urge you, the ambiance of our county and our town, it really needs to be preserved. Please don't make this mistake again.
All right.
Thank you, Norrell.
Any additions or changes to the agenda? Go ahead, Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chairman, if we could remove item 9A, fiscal year 2017-18 audit presentation due to the weather. Auditors will not be able to travel here tonight.
I understand 11C is being removed.
11C is also being removed. That is the approval of the 2018 Fire Prevention Code. And also, if we wanted to replace 9A, just going to give the board a brief update on the weather event statistics from this weekend, as well as if we could add a 9C to talk a little bit about the tier designations, I think. Talk about our change in tier designation.
Okay. Anything else, commissioners? Mr. Attorney? All right, can you get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, Chairman.
Motion to approve in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving right into reports and presentations. I know we discussed the weather events last Monday. I guess we're gonna get an update on where we stand with that and probably an update on where we stand as a county. Just Warren, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, all of you know the winter event that we experienced over the weekend. And if you still live in one of those areas that's still experiencing some impacts, particularly electrical outages, you might not necessarily agree with me, but it could have been much worse. The situations that we've seen particularly on West Old Murphy Road, Skating Mountain and Highlands areas, if those had been countywide, the impacts would've been way worse for us as far as the recovery. As far as damages, we've found, most of the damages that we've seen, there's been a few roof damages, a few vehicle damages from fallen trees, but most of the damages have been the utility lines themselves that have experienced problems over the last couple of days. The latest numbers that we've got, Duke Energy's down below 1,000 customers that are without electricity tonight. Town of Highlands was down to 50 or less this morning. And the Haywood Electric folks that are in the Skating Mountain area and the backside of the auto area is down about the 500 mark. So, we're somewhere around 1,600 folks that are without power, which is still a lot of folks. But compared to the 8,000 or so that we had Sunday morning, that's a pretty good improvement. So, we've been really pleased with those folks. Over the course of this, there's a lot of numbers that you can look at. There were at least 13 welfare checks that either law enforcement or emergency services of some sort conducted over the course of this. To check on folks, that it may have been a call from a neighbor or a friend to say, "Hey, I'm concerned about so-and-so, I can't get ahold of him." You know, most of those we get there and it's a phone problem, they couldn't get out. One gentleman had an issue with getting his gas logs lit. So, a lot of that was just some checking on some folks to make sure they're okay. We coordinated our sheltering efforts with Bob Burke and Making New Beginnings over the course of the weekend. We had several conversations with him about his processes and our processes. We just got some numbers from him as of about 30 minutes ago. There were seven different folks that were housed in hotels or motels over the whole course of this event. So, that's a success for us. Number one, we got those folks taken care of, they helped us immensely to take care of those folks. And no more than that many folks actually needed assistance during this whole event. Biggest thing we had to deal with through 911 was fallen trees. We had at least 60 reports, 60 individual reports of those over the course of about two days. And that's only a drop in the bucket because there's many more out there that weren't reported. Your 911 center, and this reflects back on not just the 911 center, but the agencies that they dispatch for, which is your law enforcement, your fire and your EMS. We ran some numbers comparing last Sunday, which was kind of a normal Sunday for us, compared to this Sunday. And there was about a 250% increase in the number of calls that we actually caddied, which means we actually had to dispatch a unit on. It wasn't just phone calls, we actually had to send somebody out on. So, that's a pretty significant increase for a 24-hour period. The other number of significance is the number of incoming phone calls that we processed, which this number is a lot higher. And you have to remember that for every incident that we have, particularly if it's a vehicle accident or something else, we may get three or four phone calls on it. So, you may have multiple phone calls coming in to report one incident that had one report. We had about a 450% increase in the number of telephone calls that were intaked, that were into the system on Sunday. And our busiest time was about 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock in the morning. And at that point, we were processing about one call a minute. We were a little less than one call a minute. The average wait time on the ring times was about four and a half seconds, somewhere in the neighborhood. So, we were fairly effective even with the volume coming in to manage those. And the real success over that whole thing is the fact that we had zero calls that were queued up, which meant that the 911 system was actually busied out and nobody was there to answer the phone. So, just those numbers alone tells you the volume of stuff that went through there and that these agencies had to respond to over the course of that event. So, we were very pleased with those folks. Obviously, it's still significant for a lot of folks. Some folks don't all have electricity tonight. But we have recovered very well. And if we look at some of our neighbors to the east, they are still not faring as well as we have. If you look to the west, they, some of them don't really know that a whole lot of anything happened. So, we were kind of in the middle. But all things considerably fared.
Did I hear you on the radio?
Occasionally, yes.
Taking calls too?
Yeah, occasionally, yes. Any questions or anything else?
Good job, Warren.
Good job, thank you.
Oh, your folks.
Mr. Manager, I know we've received two or three emails here in the past few days about making sure we take care of our homeless people. Have you spoken to Making New Beginnings? I know Warren just mentioned, you said they've taken, how many calls?
They actually processed seven folks over the course of the storm, which was, I think, the beginning of Saturday morning and ran it through yesterday.
Yesterday.
If you, and just for some reference, 2015, the most people that Making New Beginnings placed in an emergency shelter in one month was 24. The most in an entire year has been 65, just to give you a point of reference on the number of folks that they helped during this event. I think if that points to one thing, it does point to that there is plenty of capacity out there with agencies like Making New Beginnings to help those that are in need of help during an event like this, which is a great thing.
Mr. Chairman, let me add something to that. We worked really well with those folks over the weekend. We made contact with them early to make sure that they had their needs met and we would coordinate the efforts that we had with the requests that came in. We had a process in place through the 911 center with some DSS folks and with their folks to process those overnight over the weekend and through this whole event to make sure that those got routed to the right place. There's always a lot of questions about opening shelters. I actually checked the capacities of shelters to the east of us. It was actually yesterday morning. They, Buckham County and Henderson County had 23 people in their shelters combined.
Buckham County?
Buckham County and Henderson, at that time, they only had 23 combined in their shelters. Now, with the capacities that Making New Beginnings is talking about and the potential we had for at least 14 welfare checks that we conducted, once we get to about eight or 10 family units, putting them in the hotel or motel room, that's when it becomes a little more efficient to open a physical shelter somewhere. If you've got available rooms, it's a lot more efficient for us and for the system to put those people somewhere that's already has a heat and bed and everything's already taken care of than it is to try and stand up one of those shelters. We'll do it when we have to, but at some point, it's just more economical and it's a much more efficient process to house them up there. And we would've probably stretched this a little more using our numbers eight to 10, which means that's typically what the American Red Cross says is the threshold to start opening. We would've probably stretched it a little more because, as you know, Highlands is different from down here as far as the weather. School was back in session here. So, then we have to work around using the school facilities. So, therefore, we would've probably stretched that a little more if we'd had you from the morning.
Okay.
Thank you, Warren.
While mentioning Highlands while we're on this discussion, I just got a text that Highlands Schools on a three-hour delay tomorrow. I'm sure my kids will be excited. Just to further the conversation on that, any other commissioners, I'd love some input on that. Derek and I have spoken briefly about, Derek, can you refresh my memory on maybe establishing maybe a set of guidelines or maybe something that we can look at as commissioners on how we might handle an extreme weather event in the future?
Yeah, and I-
How we might be able to find something, some assistance, where we might go.
Well, we looked at, you know, the guidelines we have in place, which, you know, we follow the state building code, our local emergency management policies, as well as those guidelines established by the American Red Cross. And as Warren said, you know, it becomes so important in an event like this to have a system in place that emergency management's talking to the folks they need to talk to and coordinating efforts to be as efficient as possible. And I think that we're doing just that right now with, as Warren has just alluded to, with this event. I think, you know, it really shows that year after year, and you know, this, of course, this winter event was not the first winter event nor the worst winter event that we've ever had. But year after year, this system that has been formed and is in place has been proving itself to be very efficient and very effective. And I think, you know, as we move forward, I know Warren has budgeted funds that can be used to assist those folks that are in need during a time like this in the emergency management. And he and his staff do a great job. And I think, you know, the results and the report we just heard from him are a testament to the system that we have in place is definitely working.
Commissioners, any questions or comments on that?
If you remember, the Healthy Carolinians did a report. I guess it's been, we talked about today at MPP, I guess that report was out in probably 2012, 13, about homelessness in Macon County. And if you go back and look at that report, of course, things change, you know. Our object then was to find out, why are they homeless? I think that's just as important. If they're homeless when it's 17 degrees, you're gonna be homeless when they're 82 degrees. So, why are they homeless now is the question. That's another question that we need to find out. Is it, it could be numerous things. Are they new to the area? Is it because there's no housing available? But that goes along with, you know, is it, these folks had to come, was it because of the power outage? You know, I'm sure some of that would just be to the power outage. So, I think as we move ahead and as we look further into this, I think the Health Department did that, Kathy McGah had led that effort when there was a Healthy Carolinians. I think Derek will remember that well and Warren will remember that report. And it wouldn't, I think it would behoove them to go back and refresh that report. And I think that the legwork has been done and there's a sort of a template for that. Do you remember that report, Warren? And, because it really delved into why, and I think that's the question is, you know, why are they homeless? Is it due to housing, due to lack of job, are they new to the area? Do they have some kind of substance abuse, mental health? What is it? Why are they homeless? And there's some things in place to help, help most of those things. You know, I think that, so, and whatever this board needs to look at from there, if they're homeless now, they're gonna be homeless in the summertime too. So, but I mean, during bad weather, I think there's a good plan in place where Churchy's willing to help out also. So, but I think certainly during this event, and we've got a lot of winter to go yet, Mr. Chairman, I think EMS and our folks have done a great job.
Yeah, kudos to all of you, Warren. Been on top of my fire departments, the emergency services, 911. I've been just listening on the radio, just being right on top of things. This is certainly a comfort, to say the least. Let me end by saying this. I took some time today to go visit a shelter that takes care of some homeless people. Because I wanted to see firsthand, get a feel maybe for what they're dealing with and how they do it and how the shelter might handle it. I can just say it was very sobering to me, to say the least, to see what some people are dealing with and what should are struggling and trying to move forward with their lives. I think that was good for me to give a little better understanding for me personally. And we'll definitely be thinking about it as we move forward. Moving right along, item B, anything else before I move forward? Revaluation update, Tax Administrator, Mr. Richard Lightman. Welcome, Richard.
Well, the time of talk is over. So, I guess I could say Merry Christmas. Compared to the last two, you know, we lost like 25% of our value. That one revow, one we put off because didn't have sales and we had an eight-year cycle. Things have rebounded. This presentation, some of it followed along with other pieces that we've already seen. So, I won't stop at every slide at extended time. I'll go into the new data, so you'll see the actual numbers. Why do we revalue property? Basically, the state of North Carolina says we have to. Some states don't have a revaluation cycle and it's left up to the counties. And most of those states have been under massive lawsuits for one reason or another. So, we need to be between 90 and 100% of value. If not, I'll use Duke Energy. If they have $100 million in value, if we drop below 90%, they won't pay on $100 million. They'll pay on whatever percentage we are. If 86, they'd pay on 86 million. So, that's why you have to have it. What do we do? We collect and review sales. We look at all the maps, we gotta route them. We look and analyze the sales from '17 and '18 because those are the most sufficient. Tell them what the market is doing now. I know there's been sales in '15 and '16, but as you go through these sales, hopefully, as you get closer to revow, things are improving. And so, you want the closest sale date. If you go to the bank, you don't want necessarily somebody valuing your property back in '15 if you're trying to get a loan in year '19. The same way with us. We have to be at 100% of value. We develop pricing manual, schedule values. You guys approved that a few meetings back, so it's set in stone. And now, we applied the values. This is a long section. This will be on the website in about a day. There's an older version out there, but it'll be replaced with this. These are the things that you go through when you are setting values. You look at the property, you look at sales, you identify certain areas of concern. You send notice of value, that's where we are right now. We'll send those notices in January. You can have an informal review then. Basically, that's all by turning back written information. Even today, we still have roughly 50% of our population that owns, property don't live in Macon County. So, the written information is most easier for them to access.
You said 50%?
I'm sorry?
50%?
Yeah, because you have to look at the empty, the last census, they put like 47% of the actual structures are owned by somebody that don't have a local address. And when you do, the population multiplier was 2.1%. So, they're not gonna be here. They may be here nine months a year, but they're not domicile here. We set hearing dates. After the hearing dates, you go to the Board of VNR. Mr. Bill has been our chairman a couple of years on that. And, you know, it's a long process. Historically, what I've seen, Macon County since 1980, 83, people appeal values here more than they do in some other counties. You've got a lot of retired people, they've got a lot of time. People that are working in a busy environment, they don't spend that much time. They may send in a written appeal informally, but they won't show up at the hearing actually in front of the Board of VNR. Now, that's even changed here. People will do written appeals here more so than showing up at the Board of VNR or they'll get an attorney or somebody show up for them. After that time, then you got the time for appeal in Raleigh. It has to be within 30 days of the notice that we changed or did not change your value. The Board of Equalization since the early 91, I guess, has been volunteers. There has been maybe a commissioner on there at one time, but they're all people in the real estate industry, being appraisers, being realtors or something like that. So, we have a really good board. Some of them have been on there 15 or 20 years. And it's worked really well for Macon County. The approaches to value, you have three, comparable sales, income and cost approach. Income approach, it applies basically to commercial properties. Mr. Bill has so many rental units out there. What that rent brings in, less his expenses, is tell you what he could sell that to. It's a financial approach. Comparable sales, you sell your house and the man down the street has one identical to yours built same time, it should be similar value. And cost approach, what did it cost to build that thing? Cost does not always equate value. There's are, some people put more cost in than they get in the market. There's some people put less cost and they're in a good neighborhood and they'll get more return. Market value, this is actually defined in laws, is the most probable selling price that a property will bring in a competitive market where both buyer and seller are motivated and well-informed. So, you should know what you're buying, should know what you're selling. One thing is, like, if we know the highways. If we, if I got a piece of property and I don't know the highway's coming in, but the buyer does, well, you know, he's got advantage over you and vice versa. So, that's why it says you should know all facts about the property. If it's got a deed restriction, not a deed restriction, something like that. This is not market value. Transactions from auctions, short sales, some estate sales, liquidations, foreclosure, family or associated sales. As we went through the foreclosures, you'd see a lot of people, banks taking back properties and then somebody would flip it real quick. It wasn't actually the market for that house. When bank takes it back, they're not in the business to be a realtor. They try to turn it. So, those kind of sales are not recognized. What affects value? Of course, remodeling, supply and demand, local economy, cost of replacement, similar. You can see the price of housing, what it's done from the 80s. When I was there, lows in the 80s, you know, you could buy a house and land for $40,000, I mean, new. So, that's not the market now. It, you know, $150 a foot for an average house up is depending where you are. Highlands a lot higher, the lake's higher because you bring in labor, you got shipping and all that. So, one back from there is, if I can get back. Macon's growth rate. Right there, this is really important because it goes on with supply and demand. If you look in the early 80s and 90s, we're way down there around 20,000 population, thereabout. And we increased there in the hot period, say 90 to 2010. thousand and ten, but if you look at the last eleven through now, we're not really increasing, it looks more dramatic on that graph, but the lines are really shorter, so we are not growing near as fast. What that means is, there's not that big a demand on the properties like there used to be. At one time, you fell in the market and they were selling it real quick. If you look at the real estate sales and things like that, we used to have maybe four thousand sales and maybe fifteen hundred building permits a year, and now they have fifteen hundred building permits before five hundred houses or major additions. Now, last year, we probably had like seventy new houses, so it's a totally different market. Partial growth, if you look at that, it's kind of stagnated too, from about ten to eighteen, it's staying right around the forty-three, forty-four thousand. So, when you're not splitting land, you're not gaining a lot of value, because that's when we gained a lot of values, when people built all these subdivisions, on top of them subdivision, were houses, we built golf courses in the eighties and nineties up in Highlands, it was just a massive growth we had. Indicators, these are lot sales, if you look at seventeen, eighteen, seventeen went up a little bit, but right now, these are projected out through the end of the month, they actually are going down again this year, unless there's a major rush of these, between now and December thirty-first, we're not gonna meet last year's events. Total sales, as you can see there, seventeen, eighteen, it's flatlined. It came up from fifteen, but it's still flatlined. If you look at the different types of housing, especially, you know, the five hundred thousand, one million, two million, it's misleading there, the two million, I don't have any this year, but the one million, it had a little bit more this year, but the five hundred thousand range ones, that group is not growing. Okay, now we get into the value. What is revenue neutral? If you recall, you have to have a revenue neutral tax rate, and that allows for your growth of the last three years on top of the tax rate, plus what your adopted budgets are by the new values. To make that simple, our tax value in eighteen was eight billion dollars, times the tax rate, roughly, you wanted to bring in about twenty-eight million dollars. However, to get that for nineteen, the new value is like seven point six, then you've got public service being utilities, one hundred and fifty-nine million, motor vehicles bringing three hundred and thirty-five million, so you're gonna have a value of about eight point one billion. Less appeals, twenty-five million, less homestead exemptions, which is sixty million, you're gonna have about eight point one billion dollars. Eight point one billion, that only is a point zero zero three percent growth. Real estate value, it's a point zero zero four percent growth, so there is, basically, you're breaking even, all this tells you the market has not grown, it's stabilized the last four years, it's a little bit stagnated. There are parts of the market that have seen increases, and we'll discuss that in a minute. Tax revenue neutral, that twenty-nine, three is what actual was reoccurring money that needs to come in next year, based on last, with this budget you just adopted. And the reason that being, the last night before you adopted budget, you put like one point two million dollars in there, that's reoccurring, unless you replace that with some other money, you got that in the budget. So, if you're gonna figure your rate, it's based on what happened this year. So, you divide that by the new value, you come up with thirty-six point two cents. Then you got your growth factor in there, they allow, it's averaging about one percent, so that's three point six six. Then you got a collection factor, where ninety-eight and a half percent, so you gotta take that off, because you can't collect a hundred percent, so when you do that, you're looking at a tax rate of thirty-seven cents. That's on numbers today, that's not what accepted, when you do the budget, if you put other things in, if, you know, their values change dramatically, which I wouldn't say they would, but that's what you're looking at, that's your starting point, and where you end up, that's, that's a process your board does, that's not mine. The reason I did that, to give you a comparison of what average people gonna look at when they get a tax bill, based on this mathematical formulas we just went through. These are some of the same places I used in fifteen. So, if you see the base tax, and I'm not using the fire tax, or the landfill fees, or anything like that, because each fire district has a tax and landfill fee, so this is just your base property tax. Last year, this house paid nine oh nine, the value is dropping to around two fifteen, rate is gonna be thirty-seven cents, so the base tax, seven ninety-eight, they're saving a hundred and eleven dollars, twelve point two percent, breaking their tax. This one goes from ninety-three to one hundred, increase of forty-six dollars, or increase of fourteen percent of their tax. Some of these will start looking familiar. This one is one point one three, it goes to one point one six four, base tax, thirty-nine seventy to forty-three, increase three thirty-eight, or eight point five percent. Three ninety-six to three seventy-three, the base tax stays basically the same. One five to one six, it sees a four hundred and ninety-two dollar increase in taxes, or nine percent.
Beautiful landscape.
Somebody's hired somebody well.
So, you get with that?
It froze up on you. It's still trying to come down from Highlands. Here's a hundred and eleven thousand, it goes to one oh four, difference is nothing. One twenty-seven to one sixteen, it's a decrease of fourteen dollars, or three point two percent. As you can see, different houses in different location, different construction, different ages, they all are different, because the market for each one of those houses are different, and location, some of these may be in Smithbridge, or out in a remote area, some may be in a nicer neighborhood. This here is one of the bigger houses in the county, but this one's sold, so I know, you know, what's going on here. We have ten million, it's going to thirteen million, the increase is thirteen thousand, or thirty-eight percent of tax increase. And it's sold for more than that, thirteen. This one, one twenty-two, is going to one sixty-one, hundred and seventy dollar increase, or thirty-nine percent. Some of these things, they get changed, remodeled, upgraded, effective age, they're taken better care of, so they don't keep depreciation, they just go up in this class. This one, four fifty-nine, four forty, increase twenty-seven dollars, or one percent.
Good looking house.
This one's seven fifty-four, goes to seven thirty-seven, basically, three hundred and ten dollar difference in tax, or twenty-two percent. Some of those are, that one had deferment, so you know, if you got a deferment, your deferred amount, unless your house or your improvements increased in value, your land, you'll pay the same on the land, your deferment, it's the same thing. One ninety-seven to one ninety-six, thirty-seven dollar increase, or five point three percent. Finally, reassessment of volatile, you know, there's established procedures, we've been doing this a number of years, my first one, I started in eighty-seven, soon after I got here, so I've done everyone since then, and like I said, you always have people, I think it's more of an educational process, people, you got so many people moving and coming in, and new people coming in, and it's always different, Georgia's different, South Carolina's different, Florida, every state's different, so when they come in here, they want educated, and they come and talk to us about it. You have to be equal between properties, if you're in a neighborhood, and all the houses are same, it would be great, but we have a lot of custom homes, and different things in different places, you could be in the country, close by Highlands, but if you don't have a view, or if you're on an golf course, you know, that affects it, where like, if you go to Charlotte, you got these neighborhoods, every house in there is in two hundred thousand range, to two twenty-five, you go to the next neighborhood, maybe one fifty to one seventy-five, you know, every house in there is gonna sell, I just looked at one down in Somerville, little subdivision where my daughter lives, they have fourteen sales in there, and they was all grouped in a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, every one of them, it's like cookie cutter, we don't have that here. You could have nice homes mixed with, you know, older homes, or you could have some, I've been to some of the big houses, they have some old original properties there that you go through before you get to a big house, I just showed you, or something, so it's a mixed game. Things to remember, we have to be a hundred percent of market value, values may not be what the owner has invested in the property, you know, if you bought it ten years ago, you can't say, well, I'll pay X dollars for it, you got to show what the market is today. Different classes change at a different rate, different locations change at a different rate, percentage of increase or decrease is not a reason in the state of North Carolina for appeal. Burden proof is on the taxpayer, all this is proven by state courts and that, these are things that they've gone through the courts, and this is what the basic demand is, and they've wrote, the assessments are assumed correct unless you overcome the burden of proof. And this basically, we're to the, they're gonna be mailed mid-January, informal appeals will be written in the Board of Equalization, by law, has to start in April, and it has to shut down so many weeks after it starts. Now, it may shut down for accepting new appeals, that don't mean they quit work, and they'll have to go through that whole stack, sometimes it may, you know, three weeks more of work, but they can't accept no new appeal. All this stuff has to be advertised in the papers and everything else, it's on your notices when you get it. What's gonna happen, this is the one that probably caused some people to not be happy. If you look down there, and as you can see, overall, the values are, we only gained point four two percent, that's gross, but if you look at the different townships, you know, there could be a reason why the value went up, or went down, or changed, or whatever. One thing we are seeing at, more and more of, people don't wanna be way out, and I'm not picking on any location, but for an instance, they don't wanna be way out in the Antioch E, they don't wanna be way out in Burntown, there are people that wanna be there, but that market is smaller and smaller. People wanna be closer to town, the town of Highlands, and Jim can tell you, people are building expensive homes in the town of Highlands now, instead of being in the clubs, some people don't wanna be in the clubs no more, so that reflects in the value. Nantahala, at one time, when I first started this, front lot on the lake was twenty-five thousand, but they got up to about seven hundred and fifty thousand. Well, people paying that now, they wanna be somewhere closer to Gainesville, or Clayton, or something, they, they want restaurants and all that, and from Nantahala, it's isolated, so the values have actually decelerated there. So, anyways, that's the thing, and I always get asked, the last column, I added it yesterday, what is that percentage of value in each township? And these are just mathematical numbers, so I think everybody should be aware of it, the town of, town of Highlands, in the township of Highlands makes up forty-six percent of the taxes, if you throw in Scaly Mountain, it makes it up fifty-four percent. And then the next largest will be the town of Franklin, and Franklin City. If you get out in your outline areas, everybody else, these two districts supplement, because this is where most value is. Now, one thing I did put in this, when I add the personal property back in, the town of Franklin picks up more value than the other townships, because you got Duke Power, you got, you know, Verizon, you got all these big utility things closer to town. So, it, cars, you'll have, let's see, you have about fourteen, fifteen thousand vehicles in the Franklin township, where you go to Highlands, you got two thousand, so you know, cars is a big part of money. So, that, so when you add all that together, it gets closer, but for just real estate, that's where we are. This is your notice that you'll get in the mail, it's same as the last two years, the only thing we changed, dates and things, and added an email address, because so many people email, it's the way we converse with them now. And it gives you option of putting in some comparables. In-house reappraisal, we talking about, you know, the thirty-year type people and all that, well, when I came here, I think it was Shorty Mason, and Raymond Shepard, and those type people was on board, Miles Gregory and that, and they said, well, we wanted it done different than it used to be, so that's how we got in going in-house. So, for the last number of reappraisals, we have saved the county five point two million dollars, so, and that continues to, every time this year around, we save nine hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. So, that's why you never wanna just do it one way, you always want to improve on where you're going. Now, your turn to talk, if you have any questions or comments.
What are you seeing in just raw mountain land?
It's going down.
Going down.
Yeah, I mean, at one time, we was...
You're talking about lots, or multiple acreage, or?
Acreage and all, I mean, at one time, any acreage would be over ten, fifteen thousand, now, ten or fifteen, you get more farmable type stuff. At one time, you know, something like Gold City up there, it'd be less than a thousand dollars an acre. We're not at that yet, we're not back to a thousand, but depending on access to your rural land, people are buying larger tracts to put a home, I mean, there are still some of those people, they want a little isolation, so they buy a bigger raw tract to get one or two building sites, but they're harder sell too, they're not near expensive as they used to be. Good farmland, maybe fifteen thousand compared to, it used to be twenty-five.
And these older subdivisions with the...
Older subdivisions, there's so many out there, most, Echo Valley, you just name them, there's probably lots of lots in there that don't perk and don't meet, and they're, you know, you're gonna have half a lot of work done, have new surveys, see if it perks, see a lot of things, because a lot of these smaller subdivisions are out in the county, and they may only be third acre lots, I mean, I don't know what you can build on third acre if you don't have water and sewer somewhere available, so there's a lot of those out there. I mean, and even, like Porter Creek, I mean, they hadn't sold no lots in there much since it started, and they're asking a higher price than what we can put on it because they're not selling, so you know, you have that all the time. So, you know, you have that all the time.
Any further questions? I got...
Thank you.
I got one, Richard, real quick. Um, just because I know I'm gonna get asked, just like I do every time, and I can't remember the answer necessarily. Uh, do y'all take zoning restrictions into consideration?
Yes. And, and that's always been, I know, um, up in Highlands, they've been better getting us zoning stuff to us. The normal process that comes down through our mapping and GIs and it goes into our files. Um, but as they make changes, it's supposed to notify us as soon as possible. Sometimes if, if there is a zoning change or a zoning question, that usually comes out pretty early. People come in and say, "Well, this has been changed from commercial back to B-one or something like that." And, uh, then we adjust. Because the highest and best use is based on what's legal, legally permissible. So, you know, I may have a great piece of property, but if I can't put a commercial on there, it's still not legally permissible.
Well, I hear that, it's like, 'cause there's a, a major price variation between a B-one in Highlands and a B-two in Highlands, because of the restrictions on these two. I hear the B-T people complaining and nothing I can do about it, as you know.
Yeah.
They'll be complaining, "Well, how come I'm getting bagged in the same as the B-one?" And well, I, I don't know that they are or they're not, I don't know that they know that they're not.
Now, there is a difference up there and I know right down Main Street, it changes.
That's right, that's right.
But, um, what comes into play is sometimes, you know, some B-tos will sell at a pretty high rate because it, it's still location.
Sure.
I mean, Highlands is a little, pretty unique, 'cause you get top up there and it flattens out for about a mile. So, um, when you get on top of that plateau, you know, you can go right down the line and see the sales increase.
Yeah, yeah.
When you get right in the middle, um, say B-one, you know, you don't have to have parking and everything else, so per square foot, it's much higher.
Much higher, that's right, that's right.
Okay, thank you.
You mentioned around the clubs, Richard, I know, and for many, many years, that they've always came, you know, all the country clubs have came. Are they still, is that golf course still the main thing for those houses around it? Is that changing too?
Yeah, Highlands Country Club is pretty still demand. Uh, Cols H come back some, but what I'm hearing, I talk to Realtors and that, that's why you see downtown Highlands, these million dollar, um, patio homes or whatever they call, and they're selling at a brisk rate. I'm saying a million gets you in, that's, some going for two million. People wanna be close to town, they don't wanna pay those. Golf is like anything, the golfing sector is shrinking. There's less people playing golf nationwide. So, I think that still shrinks when you're talking about coming up here and paying a big price to be in a club. People rather buy a nice place located downtown or something. Um, one thing I would need to point out, and it's affecting values and this be online, so you'll see those values whenever you want. The town of Franklin and, and Franklin City are not growing and we're probably pretty generous with the town of Franklin. But as long as we have, the shopping centers we have with so many vacancies and other type buildings with vacancies, I can't put values on those things that the income stream does not support. And, um, Kmart Shamsa, when they're empty and Walmart's sitting over here and Ingles is sitting on it for three point six million dollars, I can't put no higher on there. So, that's really affecting growth and that's why Highlands is taking a bigger, um, value growth than the town of Franklin. Highlands, they're pretty full most of the time and they're even turned into, like this time of year, through spring, it used to be dead, well, there're people going up there all the time now. Well, when you've got so many empty buildings in town, that affects what value's gonna be. And the bank just sold, Ronnie, no, over there where Bojangles is going, they sold it for like two hundred thousand dollars less than what it was, uh, just two, three years ago. So, you know, that's gonna continue unless some economic changes happen in, in this area down low. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, Richard.
All right, moving on to nine C, tier designations. Mr. Manager handing that or Mr. Bill?
Well, since we just got all that good news, we'll tell you why. Uh, this is just to, to clear up some, maybe some confusion. This is from the Labor and Economic Analysis Division from the Department of Commerce about the tier designation, uh, which came out, the new tier designations came out on December the thirtieth. And, uh, and a lot of us in the West have moved our tier designations. Uh, so what does that mean? Well, the legislature has changed the process of doing tier designations. There was some other things that went into the distress rankings. Uh, now there's four general things that goes into the tier rankings, which are unemployment, the median household income, the population growth, and assessed property values that Richard just talked about. So, uh, number one, there's always gonna be a hundred, there's a hundred counties in North Carolina. There's always gonna be twenty tier-three counties, there's always gonna be forty tier-two counties, there's always gonna be forty tier-one counties. However they break out, some of them are right on the line. Last time, we were right on the line for a tier-one county, we became a tier-one county. This time, the new tier, and once you're a tier-one county, that lasts two years. So, now we're a tier-two county. And along with that, there's several changes in the West that you should, might give you some idea of. We are now ranked number seventy-three in the state. Uh, number one in the state would be the most distressed. Number one hundred is the most, least distressed. Uh, Chatham County is the least distressed county in the state, followed by Wake County. You can imagine what the top twenty counties are, are the larger counties. The largest county to go from a tier-three to a tier-two was Brunswick County, uh, for several reasons. Uh, but here in the West, we went from a tier-one to a tier-two for the first time ever. And by the way, you can't be a tier-three, you have to have fifty thousand population also to be considered to be a tier-three. The ones in the West who changed, uh, their tier designations were Jackson County, went from a tier-one, tier-two. Macon County, tier-one, tier-two. Clay County, for the first time ever. Clay County has the least population of any county to be a tier-two. They probably gonna appeal their tier rating, Clay County probably will, because they have the, and Chiraquik County went from a tier-one to a tier-two. So, uh, so in the tier ratings and, and, and you can dispute some of the, the factors on the tier rating, but, um, to give you an idea, we're in the state, under these rankings, we're ranked number seventy-three as least distressed. To give you an idea, Jackson County is rated at number seventy-five, least distressed. And you move to Clay County, they're rated number sixty-six, least distressed. Uh, Haywood County is a number three. Haywood County's three, Buncombe County's a number three. Uh, what does that mean for us being a tier-one compared to a tier-two? It does mean difference in, in some funding for some grants for the school. It means some funding if Kim applies for some grants from a tier-one to a tier-two county. Some good, some bad, it works both ways. Uh, but a tier-two, uh, county is where probably we should be, to be honest. And, and you look at our property values and you look at everything else and our unemployment rate, which is now almost nil, uh, has been. So, uh, but the tier rankings is, they take these numbers that, they get them from each county, and so that's how the tier rankings, now they'll come out again, uh, except the tier-one counties will not change. So, you won't see a tier, you won't see another tier ranking for two years. So, we'll probably remain a tier-two for two years. We don't anticipate being a tier-three, but we're only seven points away from being a tier-three county, but we don't have a population. We'll see what the twenty-twenty census does. The twenty-twenty census is gonna change some of this and that's the reason that we're gearing up already for the twenty-twenty census. It's gonna be so important, it's probably more important than any tier rating is the census, which we appealed and lost the appeal to the appeal to the appeal, if everybody remembers, that we were counted wrong. And, uh, so, Mr. Chairman, I, we just wanted to sort of clarify that. I hope we didn't make it less confusing than what it already is. But the tier ratings are important to the county in several ways. When we make application, and Lori will tell you that, we make application in a lot of ways, uh, as not a distressed county, and a lot of that has to do with economics also. It also goes with our, uh, you know, how, how we're viewed as to when we go out to borrow money. And, uh, and our, and our, how we're rating, in our A-rating or the double A, single A, triple A rating, a lot of that goes into play too. So, uh, so just to clarify that, that not only did we move to a, to a, an A from a one to a two, but we moved to the top tier of the number two. Uh, so, uh, so we're just seven, there's really just six counties really included, 'cause we're basically tied with one. There're just six counties that separate us from a tier-three. We can't be a tier-three because we don't have fifty thousand of population. So, according to that, Macon County's doing real well, but we all know we've got a lot of stuff to work on, but we hope that that sort of clarifies the tier rating system and how that works and how the Department of Commerce, and what they look at. Mr. Manager, anything you wanna add to that?
I think that's great.
Please do so.
I think that's great.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Bill. I'm moving on to old business, uh, tax refund request by Edward Hassler.
Chester Jones and us have been working on this and we was hoping to have some more conversation with the owner. We did have the conversation, however, we didn't get no more paperwork from him yet. However, I checked with the Macon County Airport and this is a small jet, so it's not gonna land just anywhere. And the jet has never been, um, landed at Macon last year. So, if you go into the Machinery Act one oh five, three oh four, there's, that's where it says situs. And basically, situs is where a piece of property is located. And it says tangible personal property must have acquired a tax situs in the state. And when they say state, that means any political subdivision of the state which county is, for situs in an absolutely essential tax exaction. Basically, they're saying if you don't have jurisdiction over it, because it's not been here, you can't tax it. And there, another court case says without violating the U.S. Constitution Amendment fourteen, it says you must have, um, status over something to tax it. And another case was, um, you can only acquire, um, a tax status in this state if the non-resident property, without violating the provisions of the U.S. Constitution Amendment, um, basically a non-resident can have property here, but it could be taxed here if it's situated here. Basically, we don't have situs on the property. It's never been Macon County, you know, um, it's like Carl, he has some trucks and that. If he had a couple located all the time in Buncombe for part of his business, then Buncombe could tax his trucks. UPS don't have all their trucks here, they just tax what's in this county. This man's never landed his plane here, he got his FAA number and he must've been up in his Highlands residence, which is in Jackson County, um, when he got the notice and he put his mailing address up there. As for the plane, it's located between Dakota, Georgia and, uh, airport in Florida. So, I recommend to the county, 'cause we don't have tax situs. Also, I talked to Institute of Government and Property Tax Commission, we don't have situs, so it would be a allowable refund.
We get a motion to approve the...
Based on information provided, motion to refund.
Give me a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Richard, as, uh, just, just hit me there, he wouldn't potentially be using that to get out of, he does this in all three counties and then after they tax it on the other side.
No, he actually, like I said, this is a jet, he got a hangar and it hadn't even been in Buncombe. He rents one in Buncombe and Dakota is where it's most of the time and down in Florida. So, he actually has hangars down there.
No, my, 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 what I'm saying is, is he wouldn't be using, "Hey, look, here's where I paid Macon County..."
Yeah, well, Florida, they got a real peculiar rule. I don't even know if they actually tax jets, 'cause we had that with one of the landowners here. Had his in Florida one time and they taxed it totally different, through a different process. So, but we just don't have situs on, so we couldn't tax it anyway.
Thank you. Capital Project Ordinance Amendment for radio communications.
Do we vote on that? We did, we voted on it.
We did.
We did.
We did. Finance Director.
Yeah, this is just adding two hundred thousand more to this Capital Project Ordinance. Um, you'll recall when y'all passed the budget this year, she did a two hundred thousand transfer to this project and, um, I believe this is the tail end of it, right, Warren? So, this is just amending it so that Warren can spend the money and keep moving forward with that project.
Do we need a motion to...
Motion to approve the amendment, Mr. Chairman.
Give me a second.
Thank you.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Lori. Thanks, Warren. Uh, new business, uh, Cowee School Arts and Heritage Center lease. Off the column, Stacy Guthrie, county attorney. Welcome, gentlemen.
Just very briefly, Mr. Chairman, um, at the, in the last, the last regular meeting that we had, Mr. Bill had requested that I do a little bit of work in connection with some leases that were being utilized at Cowee, Cowee School property. And, uh, as a result of looking into that, what I found was, is that county really probably needed to have a lease with the corporation that's operating the, uh, the facility down there. As a result, I prepared that, talked with the county manager about it. Uh, he said, "Prepare it for your consideration," and that's what I've done.
Greetings, one and all.
Bobby.
Thank you for a little time here this evening. We are looking to, uh, through this is to formalize our agreement with the county for really what's already in place. It just, it's something that we, we just need, uh, need to do. And also, thank you, Chester, for the work on our contract with the tenants down there, left a lot to be desired and now we have a much better, uh, contract to take to them in January, if these are approved. Uh, I gave y'all our financial statement, that's just what we prepared, uh, based on last year to give to, uh, people we're applying to, uh, to for grants. Uh, and also, I would highlight, down at the bottom of that, is that the board adopted a policy of yearly audit on all of our, finally, all of our money handling there. That's something that we never want there to be a question about, uh, using a combination of private money, county money, and grant money from other organizations. Uh, so that's in place and we'll do another one of those. We do those on the end of the county finance year, not the IRS tax year. So, that's what you're seeing there. Uh, I just wanna tell y'all a, a couple of short stories here about what's going on at the school. Uh, I assume that y'all read the local newspaper, being leaders in the community, and I hope you've been, kept abreast of what's going on at the school down there. Uh, we have had a, another tremendously successful year. Uh, we will go over twelve thousand user visits, uh, this year. And we didn't have an eclipse this year or anything. We just have increased use by the entirety of the community. People are, countywide are coming to understand that this is a county-wide facility. It's not, just because Cowee is the name that's associated with it all the time, the Cowee School, it's not just a Cowee project, it's, it's for everybody. And they are certainly starting to use it that way. Uh, our three special big events that, that we're having at the school now, we're gonna have to use shuttle buses for all of those events. Of course, we're having to use the, the big school buses for the Folk Festival and bring people in from town. We had over two thousand people at the Folk Festival this year. Uh, we have Cowee Christmas, uh, and we're gonna have to use shuttle buses from the churches, uh, next year. That has grown in size. We have a new event called the Balsam Bee. Uh, I can't explain it in, in a short amount of time, these little bags of ground up balsam needles. I, I didn't know what to think about this project when it was first proposed. Claire Smensky and family took it on, it was a huge success, uh, and we look forward to that growing again. And that'll be another event next year that we will have to shuttle people from the church parking lots. And, and I wanna publicly thank Cowee Baptist Church and Snow Hill Methodist for letting us use their parking facilities, uh, when we have these events. They've been very cooperative. And in turn, we make the school available to them for whatever. Uh, I wanna give a shout-out too to the Folk Heritage Association for working so closely with us. Uh, they're an event-oriented group, we're facility-oriented and we work very well together on that, and I look forward to that continuing. Uh, early on in the year, uh, Western North Carolina Pathways Organization came to us, they work with all of the nonprofits in Western North Carolina. They work with all of the nonprofits in Western North Carolina. Uh, they came to us and suggested that they would support, uh, our effort if we requested a grant from the Western North Carolina Community Foundation, who offers grants, uh, this one. The one that we got was valued at seventy-five hundred dollars, which we have, uh, applied for, gotten and executed, to work with a consultant that specializes in helping nonprofits learn how to operate their nonprofit and to develop a long-range strategic plan. Uh, we will receive the completed strategic plan that we've been working on for nine months in January and we'll make sure that y'all get copies of that or for your input on that. It's nothing that's etched in stone, it's, we got all the heads together, where are we? How do we get here? Where do we want to go and how do we do that? It's a plan, you have to have a plan if you want to get there. Uh, so, I'm going to pat everybody, county, our board members, our tenants, everybody on the back a little bit here. Things are happening at the school and they're drawing a lot of notice. Uh, again, uh, Pathways came to us, we did not seek them out. Uh, we got a call from the North Carolina Arts Council, can we come to the school and visit with you? Sure. Uh, they came, they met with Stacy, uh, and they said, we like what we see here, we like the distribution of things that you're offering, uh, across the board. We would like for you to apply for the Arts Council Grant to Macon County, uh, which we got. We did not seek that out, but they redirected that for us to use at the school for a whole variety of programmatic offerings, uh, that we're going to be given. I'm going to keep going here for just a second. Uh, this is also spread, so that's a statewide thing there. Uh, locally, regionally, and we were just in contact, uh, Stacy was today with, uh, with one of these groups, other nonprofits here in Western North Carolina that are trying to do similar things that are having trouble getting going. There's the Historic Snyder Store in Graham County, Fines Creek Schools, it was a huge school that served Northern Haywood County, and Shelton Laurel School, also a fairly large school that served, that served it. Northern Madison County have all come to us to see how we're doing. Uh, they have heard about Cowie School, what's going on there, how, how did this happen? How do we make it work where we are? So, we're trying to coach them, uh, along. So, we're getting a lot of attention, things are going right down there. Uh, I'm going to try and... I, I think that the point that I would like to make here is, uh, the money that the county has invested in that school over time allows us to show county involvement when we go out for grants. Our county is involved in this, they have a stake in this. That's one of the prerequisites for some of the grants that we get. We have to have an audit, uh, we have to, to show our 501(c)(3) designation and they want to know that the county has a stake in what's going on. And so, we appreciate the continued support of the board there. The money that's spent there turns over in the community. Uh, not just from the benefit to those twelve thousand people that came in the doors down there and received some benefit, uh, intangible maybe, but money that turns over in, in the form of people visiting the school, they stay in our community when they come for special events, they're in our hotels, our restaurants, uh, retail, uh, stores, uh, they're in our campgrounds. Uh, and they not only spend money here, but they see what else we have to offer here and a lot of them, a lot of the folks that come down there tell us that they've come back to Macon County because of the things that they experienced while they're here. Uh, and so I just want you to know that that money rolls over just like it does in, in any other money that the county spends. Uh, so here, uh, tonight, I just wanted to let you know there's a lot of good things going on. If, if there are any complaints, concerns, I'm not, the board is not hearing them, our board's not hearing them. If you're hearing them, I would appreciate knowing about it so that we can address it if, if, if there's any... Uh, so, now, uh, the two documents I think that Chester prepared there, I, I don't know how, how do we, do we act for action on this? If that's appropriate?
With respect to, I passed out to you a resolution which has attached to it a proposed lease agreement for one year between Macon County and the, uh, and the Macon County Heritage Center doing business as Cowie School Arts and Heritage Center. Um, we set it at one year because that's, uh, that's all we can do without doing a, an advertising. I think it's a good thing for us to do in any event, to do this on an annual basis. Requires you to look at it and talk and see how things are going.
They're going.
Um, so that having been said, uh, that is what the board would need to act on. The other document is a sublease form that your organization could utilize with subtenants and our, our board would not have to approve that.
Okay, yeah. Well, we certainly thank Chester for the work on this. In looking at this and the contract form that we were operating under, it left a lot to be desired and we're all better off, uh, having this to use. Thank you, Chester.
Mr. Chairman, having a close connection to the, the Heritage Center, of course. What Bobby left out is that, then the difference, and you've never heard Bobby say this, but what the difference is that the Cowie Heritage Center has become a place of destination now. It really has. Uh, I mean, you hear the number twelve thousand, to compare that with, I mean, you look at what else in the county draws twelve thousand people just to come. You've got the Jim and Mental Society, which draws a huge number of folks that's on par with that. Uh, there's not many things that, you know, we have downtown with the Folk Heritage, you know, uh, they do a wonderful job, but it's on par, it's on par with those things. And, uh, and the Heritage Center, the board has done a wonderful job, Stacy's done a wonderful job down there. Uh, and it's, uh, if you've not been down to the school, uh, of course, the county, it's, it's, it's a taxpayer's building, but this board does a wonderful job managing that building and I appreciate Chester. It, it did, did some work, uh, to get it cleaned up for, for, to protect the taxpayer and to protect, uh, the board as they lease these rooms out too, for a lot of reasons. So, uh, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we, uh, we adopt the resolution of Macon County, uh, declare our property be, uh, at the Macon County Heritage Center and approve the lease for one year.
Motion for a board, a second?
I'll say it there with, with just one brief comment. Um, to echo some of the things that Ronnie said, I've had opportunity to, to, uh, make a few unannounced visits. Uh, and, and, you know, things consistently look good, can, you know, it's always in the same shape. Uh, was able to catch the last show of the season, which we enjoyed. Uh, and, you know, we, citizens of Macon are very fortunate to have that facility and, and, and have you folks managing. So, thank you very much for that.
Thank you. We have a lot of dedicated people on the board there and Stacy provides, uh, really above and beyond the call of duty as far as oversight and, and management for the site down there, his heart's in it. Uh, and that's not always the case with, uh, with some of the positions.
There is a need to get this executed just as quickly as we can. There, subleases are going to be due up the first of the year and this really should be in place.
Any further discussion?
I need to ask one question. When you have a person that comes in and wants to, uh, be a subleasing, how do you, where's the line drawn that you accept them in or you won't accept them in? It says here you can't be a nondiscriminatory.
That's correct.
And, uh, is it your board that says who can come in, who can't, or how, what, what line do you use?
Well, it is, the, the prime directive for us on that is that the prospective tenant provides something there that's, that's in keeping with the theme and the purpose and the origin of the school there. Uh, of course, the, the overriding thing is we don't have any vacancy. Uh, that's not something that, that we have to make decisions on often. Uh, but those are the two priority items there, the first one being it needs to be consistent with the theme of the school.
Mr. Shields, that's expressly provided for in the, uh, the lease.
Number D. D. And when I saw religion or otherwise, the otherwise is what, uh, if you're looking in deep.
If you look at number five in particular, it basically says that the, uh, they sublease for purposes consistent with the recreational uses of the premises allowed until the tenant undertakes this lease agreement. In other words, you're not going to be putting in, um, a convenience store down there. You're, it, it's going to be uses that are consistent with what they have been using it for.
Dip. Any further questions or discussion?
Thank you, Bob. Is that...
But you all knew that.
Yes.
You're the one that raised the banner, not us.
Sign if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Uh, well, I, I have one more. I don't know if it's appropriate to act on it tonight, but I, I need to bring this up because, uh, we're funded on a six-month increment and we're coming to the end of that first six months. Uh, right now, we're making plans for next year that affect hundreds of people and thousands and thousands of dollars. And it would, it would really be beneficial in the future going forward. What I'm asking for tonight is, is the other, is the other half of the money we talked about back in June, which would be eighteen thousand dollars for the continuation of our position at the school there. We're not asking for any more, uh, than that, we haven't asked for more than that in, in seven years now. Uh, so, that's the primary thing that I'm asking for. Whether it's appropriate to act on that, uh, eighteen thousand dollars tonight or not, I don't, I don't know.
Now, Mr. Manager, when we did the budget, we, uh, we appropriated six months and we were hoping, I guess that didn't come through, but we were, it's, is that still a possibility, Stacy? That, I mean, I know there are strings attached to that money that we were hoping for, but it's not there.
Not yet. There's still some outstanding grant money that was funded last year.
But some of that comes as stipulations, like some of the other grant money that's been received, you cannot pay for employees out of that.
All, all the grant money that comes in has, as you know, from, uh, it's got strings attached to it and we have to spend it for specific things. Very rarely do we get overhead or administrative money attached to, to any of those grants.
So, yours is funded through December, Stacy?
Yeah, through December.
Through December. And where would that money come from, Mr. Sir, Mr. Manager?
If we got it out of the budget, the remainder? Contingency is the only place that I...
We've got eighty-four, three thirty-five in contingencies.
So, we didn't put the full amount in first?
No, we were, we...
Budgeted half because at the time, there was some grant money that we thought could come through for...
And it may, but we cannot, nobody knows that for sure. And if it does, it, it can't be repaid to the county, but we can apply it next year, next budget cycle if that does happen.
We can.
But we don't know that.
We don't know, we don't have it in hand yet.
It's not bird in hand, not in book.
It's approved, but it's one of those checks that lay a thing.
It's been approved, but it's not, it's not, we don't seem to check. So, that's what we were, you know, the goal, the goal has always been, and Bobby will tell you and Stacy will tell you, I mean, we started out, I think, we were putting those to eighty grand a year in. And it's always been the goal of, of board down there and everybody involved to get it down to where it was self-sufficient. And for most places like this, to cut it in half over this period of time has been more than good. Most, most have had to go up. Most people that, that do these things have to, you know, have to fund it upwards, not, not cutting it in half, so, uh... So, if, uh, it's up to you, Mr. Chairman, if you want to, if you want to go ahead and fund the other six months. I mean, I think it's a no-brainer myself, but I'm, I'm certainly willing to make the motion if, if you, if, that's up to you. That's not going to be the general.
I just want to file votes, so...
So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we go ahead and, and take out a contingency, the, 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 to carry the other six months through by lack of the, the, the other grant not coming through and, uh, and go ahead and fund for the other six months, so this...
Eighteen thousand.
Eighteen thousand, that this board can go ahead and plan, uh, for the next six months as, as, as they move this, uh, as this very important project goes along, so...
That's what, I guess effectively he's doing a budget amendment to take it out of contingency there, I'll send you some. So, you second?
Call, do, call. Call, second, you call.
Mm-hmm.
Any further discussion? I'd like, Bob, I'd just like to mention, um, I'm not picking on you, but I want this board to take into consideration too. Um, I'm, I'm a fan of Cowie and what y'all are doing there, but there are a lot of arts programs in Macon County and I get beat up on a daily basis on it, uh...
I understand.
You name it, from the Vaskin to the Performing Arts Center to all of those in Highlands that are wanting money too. And I, I think it's, uh, interesting, uh, that this board has invested so much into that, into the Cowie School through the past. And it doesn't mean I'm not a fan of the arts, I'm, because I'm going to vote for this tonight because I think they'll need it, but at the same time, I, I, I would love to see y'all get to that point where we're not having a sports show. Just like, it, it's tough for me to defend...
I understand.
Everyone else when we're consistently giving y'all money on a yearly basis.
Yep. That's the goal.
It is the goal.
And that means that all in favor, sign if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I don't know.
Thank you very much. Let me make one, thank you. Yes, Stacy.
Thank you, Bobby.
Yeah, let me make one comment on that subject before we, before we head off here. Just to let y'all know that we know what the original charge was for us to do down there. And while it was idealistic to do it that way, it's not realistic in practice because what grows the most rapidly is the demand for service and our programmatic money grows while the other does not. Uh, what we have to step up on our end is local, is, uh, personal, local donations that, that are not tethered to one project or another, where we have discretionary money that we can pay opposition. And we understand and we're still working, the whole board understands, we still have to work in that direction. We're just not there yet. And, and the other thing that I will be coming to you about individually is whatever we decide on for next year, if we can do it for an entire year rather than doing the six-month thing, I think that we've shown that whatever money we get, we're responsible and productive with it and it would certainly help us with our planning. Like right now, as we're looking into next year, we were uncertain about this. It, it would certainly help us, uh, whatever amount there is or is not decided on next year.
I hate to say it, but it's on most budget time, Mr. Manager.
Yeah. And thank you all for your service.
Thank you, Bob. Merry Christmas.
Thanks, boss.
Thank you, Stacy.
All right, um, fire protection contract with Savannah Volunteer Fire Department. I think this one's, welcome back, Warren. I think this one's been on the radar for quite some time now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, tonight, what I want to discuss is fire protection for an area of Macon County, a very small area, that's only accessible by going through another county. Uh, an area in question that I want to talk to you about is called, uh, the Turkey Knob area. Geographically, this is a little bit to the north of the Mountain Grove community. Uh, it's, it's a little bit more toward the LJ side, if you're thinking about where Mountain Grove Road is where LJ intersects there, it's a little bit over the ridge there from Mountain Grove. Uh, and in that particular area, there are nine parcels that have eight different owners, uh, that is actually located in Macon County. But the only way that you can get there is to go up Pumpkin Town Road over in Jackson County and, and turn up Two Sweet Road, which is way up toward the end of Pumpkin Town to get to these, these folks. Um, it's actually in the, it's in the Colosseia Fire District. And practicality basically speaks for itself that Savannah Fire Department has been responding to these folks if they have any issues because with this being in the Colosseia Fire District, they would have, Colosseia would have to come all the way from the Highlands Road, all the way up Cali Mountain, and then go up Pumpkin Town to get to these folks. Um, so, the solution that, that Chester and I have looked at, this is already inside a recognized fire district. Um, to solve this issue, um, and let me, let me tell you the benefits of it. Uh, these parcels are now in what would be considered a protection class ten or an unprotected area. Uh, if we were to move these over to the Savannah Fire Department, Savannah actually has a protection class six in that area, so it would be a significant insurance savings to these folks, uh, for these, these homes that are in there, these parcels. Um, plus practicality wise, that's, that's the best option for them. Uh, the option that Chester and I have talked about to, to make this work is to basically amend the contract with the Colosseia Gorge Fire Rescue because we have, we have the Colosseia Fire District and then we contract with Colosseia Gorge Fire Rescue to provide services within that district. So, the way to fix that is to carve out that little section from the, the Colosseia Fire Department's area with an amendment and in turn do a contract with Savannah Fire Department to have them cover that area from the Jackson County side. Um, the one issue that we dealt with, and, and this is not a money thing that Savannah Fire Department asks us for, but the, those folks are already paying a service fee for your fire protection. Uh, if you add the service fees together for all nine of those parcels, you're talking about three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents, give or take whatever the rate is that's set every year. So, three hundred and fifty dollars and some change. So, our recommendation was to do the amendment to the...
protection, that is with the Colosseia Gorge Fire and Rescue Inc., to carve out that little section of the Colosseia District, and pass it to Savannah Volunteer Fire Department. The other document is a contract for fire protection, that is a document that would accomplish that with the Savannah Volunteer Fire Department.
One of the things that I wanna make sure you're aware of, if you look at the, the contract for the Savannah Fire Department, it, it's almost a mirror copy of the contracts we have with our fire departments, however, there are certain things that, that we do that they don't do, and as an example, the report of rural fire conditions, that we have it in our contract, that they have to report them to us. Jackson County Departments don't report those to their fire marshal. So, we, we excluded some of those sections in that contract, we, we didn't want them to have to, to, we didn't wanna have our folks have to go inspect them for a class nine rating, and then have Jackson County inspect them, because they're contracting that one area, so as long as they're in good standard with Jackson County, we're okay with, with the provision of service, as long as they maintain a minimum of that protection class of nine, which they do, they actually have a class six.
As liaison to this department, I would recommend that, with that said, can we get a motion to approve the, both items that Chester has prepared for us? Do we need to do these separately, Chester, or can we do them once?
I, I think it would be fine to approve them simultaneously, because if you don't approve them both, it's not gonna work.
Should we say?
Then we approve them simultaneously.
Okay.
Motion by Commissioner Bill, a second, by Commissioner Shields. One item for discussion, can we send Colosseia's fire chief a bill for fifteen thousand for Chester's expertise and your expertise?
I will be happy to deliver that message.
And you can take the questions.
All right, all in favor, if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item eleven C has been removed, item eleven D, Macon Transit Advertising Proposal. Transit Director Kim Angel, welcome Kim.
Hey Kim.
Well, if you have before you a Macon County policy on transit advertising, Miss Angel will be speaking to you about that in a minute.
I will, and I'm gonna speak a little bit, and if you ask questions I don't have an answer to, for those of you who don't know my dynamic duo back here, my operations supervisor Ryan Dunn and the scheduler Tommy Gilbert, they, they get the, lots of credit for working on, on this particular project, they, they did a lot of research, and they, they put the documents together, and then we sent them to Mr. Jones to, to vet them for us, so, I'm not asking for money, so, let's all smile about that. So, you know, providing transportation services obviously is, is not cheap, there are a lot of variables that we go through, we don't know how much gas is gonna cost, we're not sure what our insurance is gonna be next year, we, you know, based on, on whatever claims are the year before. Demand tends to grow, that, in order to meet demand, some, it, it often means that we're adding routes, and the routes don't drive themselves, and, and the vehicles require gas on, in, on additional routes, so, one, one action begats another. So one of the things is, that, that I'm required to do is, we have a success plan, and it's brought to you for, for approval every year, and one of our items in our success plan for this fiscal year was to look at what kind of new revenue source that, that we could, could look at that may generate recurring new revenue, without having to task our, our customers, our passengers, having to pay. So, one of the things we, we looked at, we looked around the state, and several of our peers are doing advertising on the sides of the vehicles. So we sat down at a staff meeting and said, and I, I told them, I said, guys, I said, how, how are we gonna do this? I said, and, and I don't know, Ronnie, were you on the board when we did it years ago? We, we did it years ago...
Yes ma'am.
...and had a third party in, involved in it, and, and we had great big advertisements, and they just really didn't look very well, and I, and that was one of the things I said is, I don't want to ruin the look of what, what we have. So, the guys did some research and came up with these ads that we could do that are vinyl adhesives on the windows, we searched for policies on, obviously, we had several conversations on, what if this, this business wants to advertise, or what if that business wants to advertise, and I think Mr. Jones and I, and my staff have had that conversation a couple of different times now, and, and we've worked very hard, put a policy together that we feel like would cover, as well as we can be covered, in order to advertise. They looked at the square footage, and, and I don't think you have color pictures, and I should, probably should have printed more, but there are the color pictures of these. So what I'm handing out to you, is the ultimate goal in, in deciding to do this, is, is some additional revenue. We realize it's gonna take some time for the project to, obviously for, for spaces to be sold, and for businesses to, to start advertising with us, and we're hoping by the end of this fiscal year, if this project is approved, that at least ten percent of the space on those vehicles will be sold in, in ads. And then obviously, we want to grow next year.
Is the initial fee for the sign?
There is.
To make the sign, the magnetic sign?
The way, the way we have it set up, we're gonna handle it in-house, and, and guys, y'all feel free to come up here and correct me, or, or jump up if I say something.
Vinyl adhesive.
It's a vinyl adhesive that goes on the windows. We, they're transparent, you can see out from inside, so it does not block that. And again, these are questions the guys can, are, are much better at. We will be soliciting for the advertising from businesses, you know, putting out the word that, that the space is available, it'll be handled internally. We'll ask the advertiser for a specific type of proof to give us of what they want in the ads, my staff will take it to a, a, a local graphics artist, they will design the ad, we'll give it back to the advertiser, and they will approve the ad, and then we'll take it to print, and my staff will actually be doing the installation as well. There, there will be a, it's a hundred and twenty-five dollar cost per window as the, that's for the design, the setup, and the purchase of, of the actual materials. And then there's a monthly cost associated based on the square footage of the window, that they, the space that they would like, right?
Six months and one year.
Six months and one year. So, we have only two contract terms, they either have to advertise for six months or for a year. Chester, I think, worked on our contract, there is, in the back of your package is the, the actual contract with the advertiser.
At least it's a whole package, the beginning five pages is a written policy that the county by its commissioners would adopt, to be basically the operating policy for this program. Exhibit A is the pricing list, and this is done by vehicle number, and so, obviously, you're going from time to time, the approach to do some amendments on the, on the pricing as vehicles are retired, or as the market suggests that advertising rates go up.
Right.
Exhibit D is an advertising brochure, and then Exhibit C is the actual form advertising agreement that would be utilized by Macon County through Macon Transit, for the purchase and installation of this advertising.
Kim, is there an issue with the fed and the grants, or anything else, receiving any of that?
No, no, it is done in multiple other locations, I mean, I'm sure when you go on vacation, you see even the, the buses in areas that have wraps on them, so, you know, this is viewed as a, as a revenue source. We do have to report the revenue from it, but that's a quarterly report that we submit to DOT, and DOT submits it to the fed, so we do report the revenue, but...
So is, does this money go through the county or go straight to transit? When I write the check from Bill Construction, does it go to the transit or go through the county?
It'll come to the county, it'll have to be handled just like all other county monies, it'll go into the general fund.
And then...
But it'll be in covered.
It's past due money, is it past due money, Lori?
It'll go into the general fund, and it'll be up to Kim to sit down with our budget officer and county manager, and work out how that money will be spent.
It goes in the general fund, we'll set up a line item in my revenues, so that each time we make a deposit to it, so we know how much it is, and, you know, every so often, or if we, we do really well, you know, we'll look at it and say, and then we'll end up having to do a budget amendment, so we can disperse that out to the, the expenses.
Which would come back to the board, 'cause it would be an increase in revenue and increase in expenditures, so you all would have to approve, you know, a spending of that new revenue source.
Right.
Mr. Manager, your thoughts?
I think this, you know, just, it goes to talk, what we talked about earlier during the service awards, I think, you know, this is a department thinking outside of the box, offering a way to enhance their service, without the use of taxpayer dollars, and thereby benefiting the community by allowing our businesses to advertise, I think it's a great example of, of thinking outside of the box, I think it's a great example of, of trying to supplement revenue in the department, and I think you did a great job on this, and I'd like to commend each of y'all also, for the job you've done on this.
I think it, Mr. Chairman, I think it's excellent.
I agree.
I do too, I think it's a good idea. You just have to be careful and not put, like, Bill Construction and Cargo Rescue Construction side by side, I mean, you'd wanna separate it out.
And actually, we had those conversations about the different, the competing businesses.
You'd have to be careful about that.
You know, but the great part about managing it in-house is we can ensure that that's, that's how it happens that way.
I don't think you have much, I really think you'll sell them, I really do.
Um, we, we really tried to start with some, some reasonable pricing, I mean, obviously, you know, when we get to ninety-five, a hundred percent, we're gonna be at forty-four, forty-five thousand a year, so we're not, we're not trying to make this how we fund transit, it's how we help fund transit. And so we want the advertising to be available and affordable, and we're rolling billboards.
This is for you, Chester, this may be obvious, but I just got the document, had that off to you, you were here, so I might ask a couple of questions. In regards to who we are excluding, is all of that legal?
Yeah, I, I think basically what we are, what, what you are dealing with here is First Amendment issue, and we have one, there's one case from the United States Supreme Court that makes it crystal clear that we can do commercial advertising, and I, and I don't know if you've noticed, what we're really focusing on is, is doing something that is strictly commercial advertising, and staying away from anything that might tend to make these vehicles public forums, or limited public forums, for, for a free speech standpoint. There are times and places for everything, and we have a public forum for free speech right on the, on the courthouse sidewalk here, but not everything that the county owns has to be a public forum for free speech purposes, and I think the, what has been proven in other areas is if you open up this particular vehicle, or these particular vehicles, and make them a public forum, or a limited public forum, then you're, you're basically going to be in a situation where you're gonna have a lot of public debate going on, on the sides of your vehicles, and I think experience has shown that has not been good for the counties and municipalities who have had that.
So you feel like we're on...
I, I think, I think you're basically as good as you can be, First Amendment obviously is something that evolves with time, and so, Kim will need to keep her eyes and ears open, and I will need to keep my eyes and ears open for changes. One case could change everything.
Kim, looking at the pricing, there's different sizes based on the vehicle they score, but yet, all have the same initial fee of a hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Correct. That's basically an administrative, what that pays for is the actual vinyl itself, offsets some time that my staff, you know, it's, it's a setup fee, is what it is.
I guess my question is, is that hundred and twenty-five dollars actually covering your cost?
I think we figured it pretty close, did we not? I mean, they, we, we threw some numbers around, but again, we looked at what other places we're doing, and asked some questions about how, how do we derive that, you know, the guys know basically what the cost is, they went to several different graphics places, hey, if we do this, what, what's gonna be our cost for this type of material?
Did you ever consider maybe saving a couple of windows for nonprofits?
Talk about that again.
Maybe a donation, maybe not for six months at a time, but, you know, like a month at a time for...
We did, we...
We really do not have that covered in this, in this agreement, and we can certainly, we're in this policy, we can certainly look at that, but it is not in there, I think you, you need to understand it.
That would just be, that would be a positive for the transit.
I, I think it was actually in some of the examples that we had, right, it was addressed in a couple of the examples we had, just as a line in there, that, that, that the transit reserves the right to advertise for, and I don't know if it said, it said nonprofit specifically, but there, there was one.
Only thing about that, when you start, when you put there's...
And, and that's it, and then...
You gotta be careful when you start down the road.
And that's kind of the, and, and the guys, the guys that I had this.
My advice to, to the county is to keep this strictly commercial.
Yeah, you gotta be careful when you start down the road.
Once you get beyond, once you get beyond that, you're in uncharted waters.
Because you will be asked.
And, and that was the conversation that, that we had, and, and, you know, and Ryan and Tommy looked at me and said, do you really wanna do this? So, yeah, it was definitely a conversation we, we had had.
You'll be asked.
So, in, in, I know you've talked to a bunch of other folks that have done this.
We have.
And going through this process, what's, what's the negative of it? There's gotta be, there's, there's always pros and cons of everything, what's, what's a con to it?
I think you guys probably, Tommy, you talked to the one guy.
Make a version of a billboard could...
You know, and, and we've, I, I, if I think there's probably one thing that's a little different that we're doing is than some of the others, now, I think the first place you got, they manage it in-house, right? They manage it in-house. When I talked to my counterpart in, from Salisbury, they... And, and that was the conversation that, that, that we had and, and, you know, and Ryan and Tommy looked at me and said, "Do you really want to do this?" So, yeah, it was definitely a conversation we, we had had.
You'll be asked.
So, in, in... I know you've talked to a bunch of other folks that have done this.
We have.
And going through this process, what's, what's the negative of it? There's got to be, there's, there's always pros and cons of everything. What's, what's a con to it?
I think you guys probably, Tommy, you talked to the one guy. You know, and, and we've, I, I, if I think there's probably one thing that's a little different that we're doing is than some of the others now. I think the first place you got, they manage it in-house, right? They manage it in-house. When I talk to my counterpart in, from Salisbury, they actually have a third party. So, there are some, some third party people who handle it. So, you know, I think obviously one of the challenges will be that we're managing the entire program. And, and I do believe that's going to be a little bit of a challenge. I think it's going to be developing that process.
I think it's going to be a big positive for it, Kim. There's a much greater incentive for the Director of Making Transit to get the decision right on what is appropriate to go on the side of one of those vehicles than somebody who's selling advertising and making, and making money on the volume of what they sell.
And again, you know, that's where, I, I think Chester, when he says we're going to keep it, you know, commercial and if, if I have that question, that will be one of the, the phone calls I make is, you know, hey Chester, where are we with this type of ad?
Yeah, I mean, until the court system gives us more guidance, keep it commercial. The county's never utilized these vehicles for what's called a public forum or a limited public forum for free speech purposes. And as a result, they can, they can do this commercial advertising and limit it to commercial advertising. Once you start opening it up to the other, then there's all kinds of, you've opened Pandora's box since from the First Amendment standpoint.
Let me give you an example. Jimmy Tate's running for reelection. Not Jimmy Tate Commissioner, Ronnie Bill running for reelection. But he's going to buy every window that's available for Bill Construction, Ronnie Bill Construction and Tate, Jimmy Tate Landscaping and put on your bus. Is that legal?
It's of commercial purpose, don't you think?
It's commercial business.
It's commercial.
It's construction and landscape. It doesn't say for Commissioner, so we're not out, you know?
But I'm saying, that's the little thing that's going to...
If there's anything in the proposed ad that suggests you're running for office, it ain't going to be accepted.
Right. Right, when, when you send the, the ad proof and it says, you know, vote for Ronnie in the corner.
Remember that.
You know, if it says vote for Ronnie in the corner, we're clip the corner off and keep going, but, you know?
You don't worry about that no more.
We, you can do this with your current personnel, but you know, increase your personnel.
No, not at all. No, they, these two have promised me that they are willing to take it on, so...
I think that's the only negative, if, if you can say that's a negative, is would that more responsible?
I think it's a good idea.
And now more money to do it.
That's right.
I think you, I think you'll sell them quicker than you ever dreamed.
We hope so. We, we hope those projections are way off.
Can we get a motion to approve the proposal?
Expressly approve this policy. It's entirely...
Give a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Same aye?
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
So, I think we should consider this for our police cars, our county managers personally to get...
Yeah, bring them on the sheriff's car.
You know, we did start with propane, so we'll, we'll talk about that.
Paint landscape.
Put paint on one side and Bill Construction...
That's right, yeah. Look good.
So, I should send my staff to see each of you at your...
Put the plank and press on one side and make a county news on one side.
Would you like, want to give me your, who your marketing person is now or you want me just to have them call your office?
I am the marketing, we are the... So, I can just give you a business card and you'll take it from there?
Excellent.
Your back windows, these I can see it.
John Scherl.
Sheriff's Cars.
Sheriff's Car. Ambulance.
Warren, Warren's not here to defend the fire truck.
Fire trucks, we save all chimneys.
Discussion of surplus property purchase offers.
Yeah, I want to, I want to hear about that.
Okay, gentlemen, we have received three offers for the purchase of various pieces of county-owned property from our surplus property website that we have that was created some years ago, actually, when Carl, I think you and I both were on the planning board at that time when we looked at all the surplus properties, put them on the website and from time to time we do have offers arise. These are from a bidder would be Coast to Coast Group LLC. What I'll do is briefly hit on the bids for these three pieces of property. And then Chester has printed us out some, some rules and, and guidelines that we must follow should we decide to, to move forward with this.
You've saved a lot of time. I'm making motions, refuse all three.
It's three, you know, the, the purchase, the requested purchase amounts, for instance, on three eighty-eight Bethel Church Road, that piece of property is, is tax valued at forty-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars. We actually bought it for fifty-five thousand and the proposed offer is five hundred dollars for that piece of property. Barnard Road, moving right down the line, Barnard Road is three point two five acres, tax valued at forty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars with the purchase amount here that this, that this group has stated is two hundred and fifty dollars.
Two thirds interest for whatever that's worth.
Yeah. And last, but not least is our Housing Department property on the old Murphy Road where our Housing Department is located. And that piece of property is two acres, the land value of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, building valued at fifty-two thousand, one seventy. And the, the purchase amount here proposed was a thousand dollars. Nonetheless, I have to bring all these to you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to refuse all offers and return the deposits to those who made the offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda, we get a motion to approve the consent agenda unless there's something that someone would like removed for further discussion. Got a motion to approve the consent agenda in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
We have appointments, one to the Board of Health, I believe it was the nurse spot, if I remember correctly. Here we go, Ellen Choak for Board of Health. I know there's three, I believe there's three spots open on the Board of Health right now, so you're in need of members.
You have a motion to approve, Ms. Choak?
Motion to approve, we'll give a second. Second, by Commissioner Shields, all in favor?
Aye.
We have three seats on Economic Development Commission. Looks like we have three applications, Roger Pendergrass, Mark West...
Roger Clemens.
Roger Clemens, sorry. Roger Clemens, Mark West and Corey McCall.
Corey McCall is the new member. He's the local business owner. Of course, Roger's been on the board as has Mark. So, I, I make a motion that we approve the three members as, as liaison to that board. Carl and I both liaisons, second, second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any need for a closed session?
Mr. Chairman, if we could briefly, potential property acquisition.
If, if there's a need for a closed session for the purpose of discussing possible property acquisition by the county, we can certainly go into closed session for that.
Okay, we expect any action?
No.
No action, okay.
Go move, Chester.
Got a motion coming, second, all in favor?